All right. Welcome. Glad you're with us tonight to this, welcome to this Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It's October 6th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We're in our council chamber, Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. And we will start with our invocation with Pastor George Samcuddy from New Life Church, and then go to our flag salute.
Good evening, everybody. Let's close our eyes. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you and we praise you, God. We thank you for your presence here, oh God. Father, I pray that every decisions that is happening here in this room, oh God, let it be your guidance and your will and strength, oh God. And I pray for all the council members, city mayors, and all the authorities involved in this process, oh God. And we thank you for the safety and the protection so far in our life. We are living in a time, very difficult time, oh God. We thank you for so far, for our city, oh God. We once again place all the citizens attending here in this meeting, and everything go well, oh God. We love you, Master. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Kachini.
Here.
There are no presentations or proclamations. Do we have any visitors tonight that would like to speak? Just a moment.
Well, we'll get to these people when we get to the item. They appear to all want to speak on item number three.
This is if you're a visitor and you want to speak on something that is not on our regular agenda. Okay? Now, we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item number 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 15th, 2020. B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $117,639.13. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Okay, item two. Consider approving and accepting the following regarding State Highway 4 roadway project for: A, warranty deed for a strip, piece of park, or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 16, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 12. Payment in the amount of $22,000 to Dwight E. Langstrout and Phyllis J. Langstrout Revocable Living Trust. B, temporary easement for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the northwest quarter of Section 16, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 12.1. C, warranty deed for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the southeast quarter of Section 17, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 6. Payment in the amount of $9,850 to the trust agreement of Deward and Velma Walker. D, warranty deeds number 1 and 2 for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the northeast quarter of a Section 17, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 16. Payments in the amount of $36,400 to Johnny Marie Elder Jacques Quoz and $36,400 to the 2001 Revocable Trust of Marilyn S. Hurt. E, temporary easements number 1 and 2 for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the northeast quarter of Section 17, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 16.1. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
We'll now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item number 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 15th, 2020. B, payment of material claims in the amount of $475,1469. Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D, the appointment of Jenna Hamilton to the Library Board at Large Representative, as recommended by Councilmember Jeff Wooten. E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for October 20th, 2020, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yonda.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Item 2, reported boards, commission, and city officials.
No report seen, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item number 3. This is consider approving a revised emergency proclamation.
I make a motion that we table this item until further studied.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor. It would be my recommendation to not table this item, but if you're going to put it off for further study, to postpone it indefinitely. Because if you table it, it has to appear at the next regular meeting.
Okay, I take back the table portion of it, and I'll say I'm going to postpone it. My motion is to postpone this item until further study.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone this item.
Okay.
Indefinitely.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
At this point, is it, do we go ahead and open it for discussion from the public?
Mr. Miller?
It's been postponed, so what are we going to talk about?
Question's called.
So we don't discuss it?
I'd make a motion to amend the previous motion to allow public discussion before we take a vote.
I'll second it.
Okay, we're voting to postpone voting on the postponement of the emergency proclamation to allow for community discussion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Then let's vote.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yep.
Yonda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, we will open the floor for discussion of the community.
Madam Mayor, I have a stack of several citizens who would wish to speak on this issue, but first, we have a person on Zoom who would like to...
You have two on Zoom?
Two, two on Zoom.
Let me remind you that we have a three-minute time limit, that we ask that you only speak of some new information. If someone's already brought that up, we ask that you please let them speak. We also want to remind you that we cannot say anything at this time, that you are speaking, but we will not respond. Okay, let's hear the Zoom.
Brian Pillmore, 701 Kingston Drive. Thank you. I've been a member of Yukon's COVID Task Force for the past month. As a data scientist, I assist businesses to make sense of data, not driven by fear, uncertainty, or doubt, but instead driven by the data. This evening, you will have, and you have had, a discussion on the emergency proclamations that have been in effect since March, and the latest proclamation that is proposed. I call on the city council to follow the data and vote no on the proclamation proposed this evening, and to nullify all of the prior proclamations. You've heard many reasons why we must implement this proclamation. Given my limited time, I will counter two of these reasons. Number one, the drastic rate of increases in COVID-19 cases. And number two, the lack of hospital beds available in Yukon and Canadian County. Number one, the rate of COVID spread has been steady since June and has not had a dramatic increase. According to the Oklahoma Department of Health in Canadian County, we've had approximately 21 new cases of COVID per day in a county of 148,000 people. That's less than 0.14% of people contracting COVID each day. Today, less than 2% of the total population in Canadian County have had COVID-19. And sadly, 17 people out of 148,000 have died with COVID-19. That's around 1 in 9,000 people. The language of the proclamation has been used, has used the total case figure for Canadian County of almost 2,500 cases as of October 2nd to shock residents and stir fear. These are total cases, not active cases. Active cases in Canadian County as of yesterday are 422. This latest total includes probable cases from antigen and rapid tests that Oklahoma began including as of September 8th. It's an apple-to-oranges comparison to look at an increase in these numbers between early September and October. Number two, you'll hear that we're running out of hospital beds. This is patently false. In Oklahoma, as of yesterday, there were 2,200 beds available. There are 692 ventilators available. In total, there are 579 patients hospitalized across all of Oklahoma. We would have to have a fourfold increase here to fill these beds. Some proponents may provide anecdotal evidence of patients being transported far away due to hospital capacity. This anecdotal evidence does not agree with the statistical reality that our hospitals are not overburdened. In closing, I would focus even closer to home. In Yukon, we have 40,000 residents. To date, we've had 1,266 cases. 3.1% of the population has ever had COVID-19. Sadly, six have died with COVID.
Thank you, your time is up.
That's 1 in 7,000. I call on the city council to follow the data and vote no on the proclamation.
Thank you, your time is up. We appreciate you, Brian. Okay, next. Remember your three-minute time limit, please. Okay?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes. We cannot see, but we can hear you. Would you like to go ahead and start?
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Can hear us. Got to love technology.
I can't hear you guys, but I guess you guys can hear me, so I'll start anyway. Last time I spoke to this council, my name's Peyton Binge. I live at 5829 Northwest 82nd Street in Oklahoma City. I grew up in Yukon, lived there for 18 years until 2013. Last time I was here, speaking to this council, it was in person, and Mayor Selby was not the mayor, so I want to say congratulations to her on her new position. And I am back here today because I hear this council is reluctant to continue a mask mandate. KFOR reported, "People in Yukon don't believe this mandate can be enforced properly," and members of this council said in the study session before this meeting, "They'd like to see this measure tabled until the language becomes more specific." I ask if that's really the case, please do so until the next city council meeting. But to the contention of enforcement, I'd like to mention, I went and ate at a Subway in Oklahoma City today, and I found it's actually really easy to enforce a mask mandate. Someone came in while I was getting a foot long, they didn't have a mask on. The manager of that business said, "Hey, you need a mask." Person didn't have one, and they left. It was as simple as that. And if members of the public of Yukon want to disturb business owners who take the responsibility of adhering to this council's hopeful mask mandate, then those local businesses should be able to depend on local law enforcement to keep them safe and ensure they are allowed to operate their business in accordance to the city's proclamation. Finally, the data scientist that was performing is correct. Not a lot has changed with these mask mandates, but that's because we're not also following the other things that we should be doing. Technically, we should be shutting down restaurants and not having church and things like, of that nature, but that's not happening. And we can't control what happens throughout the rest of Canadian County, but we can lead and still do simple things like having a mask. So, all I can say is, we don't have to shut down, we can just mask up and keep this going. We're about to enter flu season, let's not change course, let's keep going. It's been, we've been able to do it, it's not been a lot of trouble or strife, let's keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton.
Madam Mayor, the first name I have is Amanda Livsey. Police are going to bring her in to the podium.
Okay. I want to remind you, you have three minutes, and that we will not respond at all after, at the end, okay?
Thank you.
State your name and your address.
My name is Amanda Livsey. My husband, James, and I live at 304 Morningside Drive in Ward 1. We also own the Big Easy New Orleans Cafe on Main Street, which is actually in 4. I'm here to ask that you vote no for a mask mandate. As a business owner, I feel that I can't in good conscience ask my employees to enforce something like this. I have several young ladies, some of which are five feet tall. They shouldn't have to approach a large man and say, "I'm sorry, sir, you can't walk the 10 feet to your table without a mask on." Not to mention that the cost that restaurants have incurred, the loss to our bottom line is already extremely high. I'm already providing masks to my employees because of the mandate you guys placed in July, or, Mayor, you did. Now, if you do this, I would then have to provide masks for employees or turn them away for business that I already need, that other restaurants already desperately need. So, I mean, I'm just here to ask, you know, that you guys vote no on this. It's not something that you should even, in good conscience, feel like you should put that on a business or its employees to enforce. It's, it's just not right. I understand that this is real. I understand that people, you know, have been very sick and lost their lives, and it is tragic. And I understand that masks, you know, do help, I get that. But I, as a business owner, should be able to put a sign on my door that says, "Masks not required," and then a customer can walk up and make their own decision whether they want to come in or not. And then there is no risk for an altercation because of it. It makes things much more simple. It protects the employees, it protects the public, because they know upfront what they're walking into. So, I'm just here to vote, ask you to vote no, as a business owner, as a member of this community. You know, my kids have gone to school here, we love Yukon, that's why we're here, that's why we live here. I just don't think this is right for our town. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, next.
Mr. Corn, our next speaker is Tammy Roberts.
I want to remind you that there's a three-minute limit, and also state your name, your address, and at the end, we will not be responding due to Robert's rules.
My name is Tammy Roberts, and I live at 12828 Torrey Pines Lane. So, my concern today is that the mask mandate, the, for wearing of the mask, has been shown at the highest level of science in randomized controlled trials to be not effective. It is proven that hand washing is the most effective tool against viruses. What we don't know is the risk associated with long-term use of masks in the general population. There's proof to the fact that you adversely affect a person's health when you lower their blood oxygen saturations. So, a mask is more an instrument of obstruction of normal breathing rather than an effective barrier to pathogens. So, masks, making healthy people wear masks is not preventing this virus. This mask may make some people feel better, but that's strictly a placebo effect. It's not stopping the virus. This virus is .06 to, at the smallest, to .14 microns, and these masks are only stopping two microns and above, and that would be a surgical mask. These masks aren't stopping anything. And for anyone to state that they are stopping a virus, you would have to test every weave of every fabric that is being worn on someone's face. There have been countless studies on the effectiveness of influenza and masks, and the results, that it does not make any difference with the flu virus. And I urge y'all to pay attention to a doctor in Tulsa, Jim Meehan, who is suing the mayor of the city of Tulsa. I think y'all should follow this, because if you vote this mandate in, and more businesses close here in Yukon, and I know there have been businesses that have closed, you're opening this city up for lawsuits. It's overstepping your bounds, and I urge that you vote no on the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Corn, it's Elaine Verres.
Oh, she's already in here? Okay, remind you just to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes, and because of Robert's rules, we will not be responding to you.
Elaine Verres, I live at 315 Novak Circle here in Yukon. Obviously, I'm here in opposition of the proposed mask mandate. This virus is purely political, pushed by the left, promoted by the media, and censored by big tech. The survival rates from the CDC are as follows. Ages 0 to 19 are 99.997 curable. 20 to 49, 99.98. 50 to 69, 99.5. Ages 70 and up, 94.6. If this virus was as serious, for us to restart our life, we would not be here talking about it. It would be self-evident. Yet here we are, proposing face diapers, which result in a warm environment, which is a petri dish for other diseases. Recycling CO2, which further reduces oxygen levels, which lowers our immunities. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on, on short-term and long-term public health, including but not limited to worsening cardiovascular disease outcomes, fewer cancer screenings, deteriorated mental health, leading to excess mortality in years to come, with the working class and younger generation carrying the heaviest burden. Keeping these measures in place until vaccine is available will cause irreparable damage with the underprivileged disproportionately harmed. Those not vulnerable should immediately resume normal life. Simple basic hygiene is sufficient. Staying home when sick, washing your hands. Extra, all extracurricular activities should resume, including sports. Restaurants open at 100% capacity. People return to work rather than work from home. People at risk can participate if they choose, while society as a whole enjoys the protection conferred upon by the vulnerable, by those who have built-up herd immunity. The following states have already dropped all COVID restrictions: Massachusetts, Tennessee, Florida, South Dakota, Idaho, and Michigan. Although a mask may offer comfort to some, is ineffective per the manufacturer's own label. Masks must remain a personal choice, not forced by any entity. And I'd also like to bring up the H1N1. That virus killed many more than COVID has affected. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Shivers, do we have any more?
Anita McNeil.
Ms. McNeil, let me remind you, you have three minutes. There'll be no discussion at the end of it, and also state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
I'm Anita McNeil. My address is 2412 Sequoia Park here in Yukon.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for your time. The chart that's being handed out is information taken, excuse me, from the Oklahoma State Department of Health. This is the results from today. And you, I'm giving this to you so you can take this and look at it at your time. But you will notice in that blue line, and that blue line is indicating the active cases of COVID, and it is declining. There's so much I could say, but there's only less than three minutes, therefore, I'm going to ask a lot of questions. And obviously, you're not going to answer them all, but I want to know the answers to these, and that would be first, when and where do I wear a mask? Would I wear a mask when I'm driving my car by myself on public roads? Do I wear a mask when I'm driving a bicycle? Would I wear a mask when I'm fishing by myself? Where do you want us to wear a mask? I understand city buildings, and I have adhered to that. But how about when I'm on my front porch, having a cup of coffee? Do I wear a mask then? And also, what is being gained by wearing a mask? You've, you've received some information already this evening on statistics, and then you have this chart to look at at your time. And why are you doing this? Why do you want to have a mask mandate? Is it because it makes you feel better? Because obviously, statistically, it doesn't stop the virus, which is a bad virus, and I admit that. But many, many studies both show they don't work, and they also show they do work. The CDC also contradicts themselves numerous times, and this information is taken from the state of Oklahoma, as well as from the CDC. And how is the city going to mandate wearing these masks? Is this going to be a resolution, or is this going to be an ordinance? Because you all know, if it's a resolution, there's really nothing you can do, it's just a suggestion. If it's an ordinance, then it's going to have to be enforced. And how is the city going to enforce that? And how is the city going to pay for the additional police it's going to take to enforce it? We don't have the money in this city, because I would, you would have to hire additional people to do that. And are the police going to have to track down people that aren't wearing masks? I mean, those are things that you really have to consider.
You're at three minutes.
I would like to thank you and just say that wearing masks should be a personal choice, an individual choice.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else, Mr. Shivers?
Kay Batista.
May I remind you, you have three minutes. Would you please pull your mask up on your nose, please? I'm sorry, city building. And also, I want to remind you, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address, and at the end, because of Robert's rules, we won't be responding to you. But we appreciate you coming.
My name is Kay Batista, and I'm at 1129 Kingsway Avenue. I've been a nurse for a very long time, for about 45 years, and so I'm probably one of the usual nurses, and there was one that had came in earlier who's also an RN. And the whole point in, in why we're here is, this is a prime example that it's done all the time. You know, people contaminate their, their mask all the time, trying to reposition, trying to breathe, trying to speak, and then you touch everything else, and that gets contaminated as well. You know, the whole point is, if we do cross, actually do a six-feet type of social distancing, that's best than the masks, because, and it continues to fall down. Because the whole point in washing the hands is to try to prevent the spread, but you're not going to prevent it with this. This is not your means of doing that. To mandate to people that they can, cannot do, you know, wearing a mask in certain places, and all those kind of things, and like I said, it's, it's, it's based on the fact of the, of the science. The science says that this is caused, will cause you more problems with your immune system, you're at more at risk, because you're breathing in carbon dioxide, which you just breathed out, and then that level causes your oxygen to lower. It's far more, more dangerous than wearing it than actually having. If I'm healthy and well, then I'm not going to wear a mask. I don't need to wear a mask. I'm not contaminating anybody. But if you, you know, such as like, years ago with TB, they would have you wear a mask, but they don't make, make the community all wear masks, it's just the person who actually had TB. So, the whole point is, you know, the hypoxia, the impairment in your immune system, that's what that is all about. And so, we're here to ask that you will not, you will vote no on this, as she... And so we're here to ask that you will not, you will vote no on this, as she had mentioned, there's multiple states that have already stopped doing their mask, and their system has not decreased. What in eight months has occurred that's been approved at all by wearing these masks? Nothing. We still have the, you know, the pandemic. Nothing has changed on that, and probably won't until we stop actually wearing them. It's the safety. A mask isn't really about safety, it's really about more social control. And the bottom line is, if, like I said, if I'm not sick, I don't need to wear a mask. And if it's not wise to breathe one's own breath for long periods of time, these masks are worn for hours and hours during the day, very unhealthy. But I just wanted to say if you would vote no for it, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Do we have someone else?
We do. Chris Martin.
I know this is taking time, but I believe it's important that we listen to our citizens that would like to speak. I think we have some that are sitting in here.
They're gathered outside, he's coming inside.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Let me remind you, you have three minutes. State your name, your address. We will not be responding at the end because of Robert's rules. Please, I want again to emphasize those that are listening outside, we need you to be bringing in new information. If you're just repeating what somebody has already said, please defer to someone else. Okay? Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Chris Martin. I live at 801 Royal Lane, and I'm in Ward One. The overreach of this mask mandate is just incredible. We're all adults. We all understand that we need to wash our hands, we need to wear a mask every once in a while when we're around a bunch of people. But mandating something like this from the city, all it does is it takes business people and makes them do something that's going to hurt their business. Right now, with the way the economy is, business is important. We have to have tax dollars in Yukon to fund our services. All you're doing is you're keeping these tax dollars out of Yukon and sending them someplace else. And as a city council, you can't do that. So I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay?
Candy Shorts.
Can we say who's on deck so they can have them ready?
The last one I have, Mr. Corn, looks like it's Kaylee Intz or Ertz. Can't tell.
No, I've got you. Okay. Let me just remind you, state your name, your address. You have three minutes. We will not be responding at the end due to Robert's rules.
Okay.
Let me take my glasses off because my breath is fogging me up here. First of all, my name is Candy Schwartz. I now live at 405 Sederberg Court. I've lived in Yukon since 1985. As many of you know, I was Yukon's court administrator for 14 years until July of 2019. As the court administrator, working with Judge Ramey, two city attorneys, the city prosecutor, even police John Corn, we always had one question that we asked, regardless of what we were doing, and the question was this: Does this violate someone's civil liberties? And if the answer was yes, or even a maybe, we backed off from that. Because regardless of how you feel about the mask, this really isn't about a mask. It's about allowing an individual to choose for themselves. Now, as a business owner, I have people that come in every day. Many wear masks, many don't. When they see us and that we don't have masks on, they always say, "Do I have to wear this?" My answer is, it's up to you. You're not going to tell me what to do, I'm not going to tell you what to do. So when you peel back the emotion, when you peel back all the rhetoric, and you go back to the very basic foundation, does this violate someone's civil liberty? And in my opinion, not an attorney, the answer is yes. And I would ask that you vote no. It's up to the individual. We're all adults. We all want to be healthy, and this is an overreach on this council's part. So I would urge all of you to vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Candy. Okay, we do have somebody that has come in after the meeting started that would like to speak. He didn't fill a sheet of paper out.
It's your call, Madam Mayor.
I say, Don Blows. Remember, Mr. Blows, you have three minutes. State your name, your address, and at the end, we will not be responding, but thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Don Blows. I live at 301 South Richland Road in Yukon. I'm the CEO for Spanish Cove Retirement Village, which is at 11 Palm, and I'm also a former state health official, having worked at the state Department of Health for 26 years. I'm here to express my support for a temporary, temporary mask mandate for the city of Yukon on behalf of myself, several hundred residents at Spanish Cove, and anyone else who is COVID fatigued and wants the pandemic to be over sooner rather than later, and with the least amount of devastation possible. Of all the options that you have on the table, a masking requirement is by far the simplest, least expensive, and most proven best practice for protecting the physical and financial health of everyone who lives or visits this community. I realize that masks are a divisive issue for some, yet they shouldn't be. I don't like wearing a mask any more than the next person. But I understand it to be a matter similar to a World War II saying, which was, "All gave some, some gave all." Except this time, I hope we're saying when it's all over, "All gave some," so that some didn't have to give all. It's a small, yet very responsible gesture to take the fear out of this community and restore faith in each other. Your support of a mask requirement is simply another way to say that you love your community and you love this country. As leaders in this community, I'm asking you to take the high road for the benefit of everyone in this community. And lastly, I will remind you as I close, the longer this lingers, the more expensive things will become. If you think your health insurance is high now, or the city's health insurance premiums are high, you just wait till this is all over. The longer we go, the more expensive the aftermath becomes. So it's best that you do what you can right now to mitigate things, to soften the piper's blow to the city and to the citizens. So please, 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 support a temporary masking requirement for this community. And I will say also, many of my residents now are still doing business. Many of them are going to places that have a requirement, or they're going to Oklahoma City to do their shopping. So it's not necessarily, it's just the best way to keep commerce going, and it's a simple thing that we all can do, to appreciate our neighbors and to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Blows. Is there anyone else?
Last one. Kaylee Intz or Ertz? Intz.
Okay. Hi, thank you for coming tonight. May I remind you, you have a three-minute limit. Would you please state your name, your address? At the end, we won't be responding, but that's not rudeness, that's just due to the way the meeting has to go.
My name is Kaylee Intz. I currently live at 515 Mark Avenue. I'm here to oppose the restrictive and unjustified mask mandate that you're considering tonight. I hope you've been listening to the majority of people that have come in here, because that's who you're voting for. Your job is not to vote for your own opinion, your job is to vote for those you represent, and that's us that are in here speaking. I would rather be home enjoying time with my family right now, but I chose to be here instead. Someone needs to tell you that updating the emergency proclamation to include a public mask mandate would be a gross abuse of your power as a government official. You've stated that you would update the proclamation and impose the mandate for the health and protection of Yukon citizens, but I would like to remind you that you are a representative, not a physician. You are mistaken if you think I look to you to protect me and my family. With widespread split information regarding the effectiveness of masks, we as individuals are turning to our physicians for recommendations based on our own unique health circumstances. It's their responsibility and ours, not yours, to bear that burden. Your responsibility is to step back and allow them to do their job and to represent the people of Yukon to other local governments. I caution you against seeking the approval of other local governments at the expense of the approval of those you represent, and I caution you against using your power in opposition to the people you represent rather than for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else?
I have no other requests.
All right. So at this time, we then revert back to, we have a motion in place and a second to postpone the emergency proclamation, and so now, any more discussion?
Yeah, I would encourage the mayor to consider that it would be inappropriate for the council to vote on an amendment to an existing proclamation. It's the mayor's prerogative to issue that proclamation, and should the mayor wish to amend it, that's her prerogative, I would encourage her to do so. If we want to have a discussion and a vote in this body as to whether we should have a citywide mandate, it needs to be brought forth in the form of a new ordinance, so that we can discuss and vote on that. I don't think we have any authority to vote on an existing mayoral emergency proclamation.
Any other discussion? We at this time are going to vote on whether or not to postpone the approving a revised emergency proclamation. Let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Consider approving Resolution 2020-17, a resolution declaring, establishing, and clarifying the city's practice of allowing council members to use video conferencing to remotely attend city council meetings in Yukon. This is the resolution that we read earlier. Do I have a motion?
So what are we saying here? Are we saying, so I understand what we're saying here. We're saying that we're going to allow zooming under that resolution?
Under the resolution that was presented to us earlier. 2020-17.
That will be effective until November, right?
It will be effective until November 15.
November 15.
All right.
Do I have a motion?
Well, I don't believe in Zoom. I don't believe in Zooming, so I'm going to let somebody else talk about it. I'm poor on that computer. I'm an old man.
We won't argue.
No motion, Madam Mayor, the item dies.
Okay, then we will not be allowing zooming? Okay, we'll strike that. Number five, consider approving a conditional use permit to Sherwood Construction Company for a temporary concrete batch plant and yard to provide concrete for the ODOT Frisco Road and I-40 project located at 2820 North Frisco Road with conditions as recommended by the planning commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item number six, consider approving Resolution 2020-18, a resolution of the city of Yukon requesting the Oklahoma District Attorney Council and submit same to the Justice Assistance Grant Local Law Enforcement Program, that's JAG dot slash LLE, in the amount of $9,579.50. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item number seven, consider approving the purchase of 18 portable radios for the police department from L3 Harris Technologies, Incorporated, in the amount of $24,633 as approved in the police capital improvement budget, per radio contract with the city of Oklahoma City as recommended by the police chief. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd have a question for the chief. Does this leave us still in need of additional equipment, or what situation does this put us in?
This item just takes care of the handheld devices that each sworn member carries. We're in the process of working with Oklahoma City on our mobile devices, so they are converting. Oklahoma City is going to a P-25 microwave system. This moves our equipment in line with that, since we operate on their system.
Okay.
So this, just the handheld portion that you're seeing, possibility for future expansion. As we hire additional people, you'll see an increase to these quantities of items.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item number eight, consider approving the purchase of 24 portable radios for the fire department from L3 Harris Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $40,740 as approved in the fire capital improvement budget, per radio contract with the city of Oklahoma City as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, is this along the same lines?
Yeah, we operate on the same program as they do. We're upgrading to the P-25 system as well. Very good.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item number nine, consider approving a D and number two to maintenance agreement for traffic signal improvements, coordination, and monitoring with Signal Tech, Inc., for the traffic signal work on Garth Brooks Boulevard from Northwest 10th Street to Vandement in the amount of $202,475 for one year as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Absolutely. Robbie, is that you? Tell us the great news on this one. What's this going to do for us?
Okay, what we're going to do, just so everybody knows, about three or four years ago, we did a study on Garth Brooks Boulevard that identified 13 projects that should probably be done over the next 25 years. And so one of them was doing what we're going to do with this. And so on Garth Brooks from Northwest 10th to Vandement, we're going to install flashing yellow left-turn lights at the intersections. Also, what we're going to do is every intersection has a cabinet with a controller, and we're going to update our cabinets and our controllers with the latest technology. And so what this will allow is for Signal Tech and traffic engineering consultants to see real-time data, and from their office, they can monitor and tweak the system. So once they get everything installed over, and as they see the traffic and everything going, then they can tweak it, and then they can also fix it for like weekends, and in the morning and at night, to let traffic flow a little bit more.
So should we see a dramatic increase of, well, just the traffic?
Decrease.
Decrease in traffic issues?
I can say that you will see some traffic improvement.
It will flow better.
Right.
So we won't have one light that's red and one that's green that's about 50 feet from each other?
Right.
Any other discussion?
Well, let's go back. I mean, you're still going to, uh...
No, no, we want the way you're going. Sorry, we're...
I'm not promising anything, but it's, traffic is going to flow better, and yes, this will help interconnect two or three signals together, so you do flow.
Good.
I think we know which two or three we're talking about.
Thank you for your hard work on that. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Right, moving on. Item number 10, consider approving the creative crosswalk requested by Yukon's best main street located on North Fifth Street. with conditions as recommended by the Traffic Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, I would like to call Vicki Davis, our Main Street Director. Oh, I'm sorry, who else is back there? I can't tell. Stephanie and Stephanie to come forward and discuss this exciting new thing that's going to happen.
Yes, so, yes, I'm the Main Street Director, Vicki Davis. And Stephanie Hale is one of our board members, and she serves as our Design Point Chairperson. And design element of our Main Street programming deals with beautification, property improvements of downtown. So we've been working a good long time to, with a lot of ideas, as you can imagine, of ways that we can beautify downtown. So I'm going to let Stephanie take about how this project has come together.
It's been a slow go, but over a year, we've kind of brought it together with a local artist, Carlos Barbosa. Some of his stuff is around town, on the mill, behind my building. I own Urban Oak here off of Main. And we just had this parking issue on Main Street. And so we tried to find some creative ways to connect the parking, the free parking back here, the city, over to get people to cross over and to go down the street on 400 Block and 500 and shop. So that's kind of what we came up with. I don't know if they have the renderings and all that. I've seen it. But basically, it's just to connect the public parking that they can park, they can get out, they can walk. And Carlos has done a really great job in creating an all-things-Yukon. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but I think it's going to be, become kind of a landmark, too. It's really, it's been a long process, but the, just the whole aspect of it is going to, I think it's going to bring a lot to Yukon.
Can you show it to them?
Yeah.
Sure.
I've seen it.
Is Carlos the same artist that did the other?
Yes.
My son is going to be him for Halloween.
I don't know if you're that cool.
He's very talented. I don't know you're that cool, Eric. And this is three-dimensional.
It is. So if you're walking, let me get my directions. If you're walking east to west, you will be enjoying the crosswalk. If you're walking west to east, you're enjoying the crosswalk because he has them going. Like, yeah, laid out. So.
He was able to put in different aspects of Yukon.
If I can just connect this a little bit, some of you participated in our visioning for Main Street when we were still at the beginning of our startup process. From there, from public comment, from a variety of sources of information, from some of our surveying that we did, we developed two different transformational strategies that would lead our way to revitalize downtown. One of those strategies is the connectivity of downtown, whether that is from our businesses feeling supported by other businesses, or whether that is the physical connection, the walkability of our downtown area. There's a lot of work to be done to realize that, and this is just a start. The other strategy that I think you will see on full display here is our cultural heritage tourism. So develop a tourism by enhancing the presence of our cultural heritage, the presence and appreciation for that. And I think that you've also seen that in some of our other activities and events recently. So we're really proud to bring this together. We're not just a group that does events and parties. We really want to put the meats and potatoes into our downtown as well.
Anybody have any other questions?
Well, it was sad to see that Mr. Crosby's face wasn't there.
Well, you know, we could take Garth out and put you in.
I thought he was great.
So moved.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much for that presentation. All right, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we have item number 11, which is consider a motion to recess as Yukon City Council and convene into executive session for discussing the hiring of a city manager as provided in 25 OS 2003, Section 307 B1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yep.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to go into executive session. You're free to wait until we come out, or you may go ahead and leave. I'd like Doug Shriver, Cindy Shivers, Judge Miller, and Jim Crosby to please come with us.
Oh, my gosh, it's like an iceberg in here.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, my son's going to meet Carlos for Halloween. He's going to be what? Carlos. Oh, that's cool. Yeah. I agree with you.
Okay.
Somebody didn't pay the electricity bill.
We'd save so much money if we turned that air conditioner off. All right. I'd like to consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed. No action was taken and no votes were cast. Okay, that brings us to new business. There is none. And so we'll move on to council discussion. Can we start with you, Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I appreciate all the visitors who were here tonight to express their opinions and concerns. We welcome you to every council meeting to do that as well. And then I want to thank the city staff and all the citizens of Yukon who have reached out to me in prayer and support in the loss of my mother. Thank you.
Councilman Wooten?
I'd also like to thank all the citizens for their input this week. Also, Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank you. You and I don't always agree, but I respect you and I appreciate everything that you do for this great city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Kachini?
I want to thank everybody for their support again. And just a reminder, on 10 October, that's this Saturday, we're doing a city banner for the veterans, ribbon cutting at the museum at 10 o'clock. And on October 20th, we're going to do the VA clinic ribbon cutting. We're going to open up a new VA clinic in the city of Yukon.
Wonderful. Councilman Gilliland?
I would echo a couple of things that have already been mentioned. Great to see the participation in city government tonight. You do not have to wait until there's a major issue of concern to be involved.
Yep.
So I would encourage you to continue that. And I, too, would like to express my appreciation for Mayor Selby. I've told her that there's things we may disagree on, but I will have her back because I know she's operating in what she believes is the best interest of the people of Yukon. So thank you, Ms. Selby.
Thank you. And I would like to reiterate that, you know, that's why it's great that we live in America. We can disagree and still work together. And we have that ability to speak our mind and to say what we want to. And I was very glad for everybody who came out tonight to do that. We want to hear your opinions. So I thank you. I want to remind you, this Thursday, Yukon's Beautiful Best Garden Club, if you have not been to Campbell Park, please go by and look at the Monarch Way stations. Also, on Friday, Community Coffee is going to be at Chisholm Trail because this weekend is Chisholm Trail Festival, which is on Saturday. It's free from 9:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. And that night, we'll be having movie, Apple Dumpling Game. Also, as Councilwoman Kachini said, we will also be declaring a proclamation that says it's, we're serving the month of National Veterans. I'm sorry, it's just so dark.
It's for the voters that...
No, but it's going to be called...
Veterans Appreciation.
Veterans Appreciation. I'm so sorry. I don't have that down, and my mind is numb right now. So please come out at 10 o'clock and help us look at this. This is a neat, neat project. We will have banners all up and down Main Street that are honoring our veterans. Thank you so much for coming tonight and listening.